I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to your father, for which his sons, one nation, and your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and welcome to our City of Deco Bay Public Affairs Council meeting, December 2024. Yeah, make your call adorable, please. Counselor Watson?
Here.
Counselor Sovereign? Here. Mayor Short?
Here.
Counselor Wreck?
Here.
Counselor King?
Here.
Counselor Beasley?
Here.
Thank you. We do have one change to the agenda this afternoon. We did receive the community renewable energy grant application, so I'd like to put that under new business 1A. We'll just squeeze it in there. Yeah. So, I have, and I don't know if it should be during the council comments or the cities involved with a macro plastics, I think, and I have some information about home volunteers. Can I just say that?
Yes, I can, Counselor.
Okay. Is that okay? Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I'm gonna put some news in that just because people got the email. Oh, I love that. Good, okay. Was everybody had a chance to review our minutes in the council panel under the consent agenda?
Mayor, if I could ask one question about that. I did see the reimbursement check for the League of Women's Cities meeting.
Yes.
I was hoping maybe toward the end of the meeting at Counselor's comments, you might be able to report on it.
I found the whole thing right here.
Oh, yeah. Thank you so much. I appreciate it. So, that's an interesting meeting.
Oh, it's fabulous.
I have a question, too. Should we wait until we have a motion? Yes, in discussion.
Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second to accept the consent agenda. Are there any discussions on the?
Yes, thank you. I was looking at the AKS Engineering Force for all the charges for this month, and it totals to $27,570. Probably only which $3,600 we might get back from the Deco Bay girls. And sometime on some discussion before our budget, I think we need to talk about those costs and whether it'd be better to have an employee or that's a lot of money for one month. And I didn't go back and into a grand time to see what we were paying the other month. Thank you. We have a lot going on, Brandon. I know, but is there another way to still have things going on and not be so expensive?
Well, I can answer that right now. The short answer is no. There really isn't. There is a lot of things that staff doesn't have time for. We would need another staff member, another staff employee dedicated to doing the city engineering stuff. We just don't have that.
That's what I'm saying. This is contract work, and if we're paying $27,600 essentially one month, could we, and I haven't added up all these other months, but could we hire an engineer for our staff for the money that we're already spending in contracts? So, anyway, not before discussion.
It would be a lot, but you're right.
I noticed that over $13,000, that was four since expert, like serving types of things that wouldn't come under the purview of a staff person anyway. So, if you look at the detail on it, there is a lot going on that we need expert help for. But I agree that some point down the road, we might want to visit the chance of getting a staff person.
It's the same thing a city engineer does a lot of the project or the planning work. He helps me with a lot of the support and planning work as we have a part-time planner who is busy during the week doing his planning jobs, keeping up on that. So, there is a lot of support that's given beyond just engineering, public works, support, you know, things like that. A lot of issues we've had lately with fixing things that weren't done correctly in the past, and it's ODOT gets involved and it gets more expensive. But yes, if we had a dedicated city engineer, they're still expensive, but we could possibly do it. Something we could investigate. Are there any other questions or comments? On the paper, accepting the consent agenda as presented, say aye. 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 Any opposed? Thank you. Paul, you're up with our guest's pre-said presentation.
Under take away. Could move just behind CD. Yeah, thank you.
The two of us presented together.
Okay.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. My name is Dr. Andres Oroz. I'm the Vice President for Academic and Student Affairs at Oregon Coast Community College, as well as a proud resident of Deco Bay, and I have worked with you.
Paul Scott, you guys know me. I'm the Executive Director of the Economic Development Alliance in Lincoln County, and also a resident and alma mater of Deco Bay.
So, last year I presented to the council about our trade education building, proposed building. We pulled that out of the proposed because the $8 billion match was on hold by the state. So, we decided to wait until we have that $8 billion back in our budget in the bond assets. So, second slide, thank you. The college is presenting voters for the proposed bond measure for the May 2024 ballot. The primary reason for this is to construct a trade education program here in the coast, and the only one here. The Oregon Coast Advanced Technology and Trades Education Center is a $33 million proposed measure to be paid over 21 years. Obviously, this is not a new idea. When the college first received our accreditation to be able to produce our own programs, our community requested to include career technical education programs because that's something that we do not have here in the coast, along the coast that is open to all students. A little bit statistics on the job market nationwide, on the deal of career technical education is there. Next slide, please. On the ballot project of the trades education facility, OCAT, and the projection and monetization of existing facilities will include flexible trade education spaces for any types of education, career technical education, to expand around link and anything else in the future. So, this building will be a very flexible open space so that we can sustain any program in the future. Currently, we do not have any dedicated space for career technical education in any of our facilities. Right? Some of the programming under consideration. There is multiple things that we are working on. As you know, we have a state-of-the-art aquarium science program, so we want to expand that aquaculture. We have our welding program. We want to continue to expand. There's a lot of need here in the county for welding. And then we started working already on our pre-apprenture study with construction and trades education, and then Megatronics, marine, extended nursing program as well. Next one, please. In this chart, you will see the 17 community colleges listed in there and the permanent rate for all of them. As you can see from that table, Oregon Coast is in the very bottom, so the lowest permanent rate. And then on the third one is the bond rate. So, those are the community colleges that have currently bonds. And as you can see there as well, Oregon Coast is in the very, very bottom. So, really, nationally sustainable, one of the least expenses of all the 17 community colleges in Oregon. Next slide. The college capital construction bond rate is estimated to remain at the current 21 cents per 100, a thousand of assessed property value. If the proposed bond pressure passes, that's because existing debt is retiring. The current bond will be retiring in 2025. So, it will be just an extension of that current bond. With that, the college will also receive the $8 billion state matching. So, if we don't get the bond assets, then we will not be able to receive that $8 billion state match. Please. In the proposed bond measure passes, funds will be used to first, the main one, construct the new trades education facility on the land already owned by the college in Newport. So, we will not have to purchase additional land. We already have done environmental study in that area. We will have some repair and updates on existing buildings, and then increase safety and security, and then increase access to career trade, career technical education in the county. Next slide, please. What would the proposed measure cost if it passes? The $33 million proposed bond measure will be paid over 21 years. The bond rate is estimated not to increase because existing bond is retiring in 2025. Next slide, please. Obviously, everybody knows that property tax is based on assessed value, not the real market value. So, we give a little bit of example of that based on an average homeowner. Next slide. So, unfortunately, I encourage, you know, to vote for this proposed bond measure.
All right. And one thing that's kind of interesting with these bond measures is that employees of those organizations must talk about the facts, but certain of us are maybe cheerleaders. So, I'm coming to you guys wearing three hats. One as a Deco Bay resident and a homeowner, one as the economic, full-time economic developer serving all of Lincoln County, and also as a member of the Oregon Coast Community College Board of Education for Zone 3, which is Deco Bay. And one thing, a couple of things I just wanted to emphasize and just to come out, Dr. Oroz mentioned, is that the levy that we have at the Oregon Coast Community College is the lowest levy of all community colleges in the state. And having the opportunity to serve on the Board of Education, I get to see constantly what incredible stewards of our public dollars, our tuition dollars, our final financial aid dollars, the staff of that community college is. And they do an amazing job preparing those students for careers going forward. And this facility and the improvements to the existing facility will help them do their mission better. The other thing is, an economic developer, I never want to leave money on the table. I want to leverage funds. And if this bond passes, we get an additional $8 million. So, that is, that impacts and magnifies the impact of each individual homeowner's tax assessment. And the other thing that Dr. Rose did not say is that in Oregon, bond measures are the only way to raise sufficient capital funds to build new buildings and do substantial maintenance. ongoing maintenance should be part of the regular budget. This is very different from like state colleges like OSU, where the state of Oregon owns those physical plant buildings. That's not what happens. In the Oregon Coast Community College, taxpayers own those buildings. So, this is an investment in our educational infrastructure. And one of the other things that strikes me is this just isn't for kids coming out of high school. The average age of students at the Oregon Coast Community College is 25 years old, which means there's a lot that are younger, but there's a lot that are older. This career technical education and career connected learning center is going to allow not only folks that are just entering the workforce to be trained for living wage, family wage jobs, but also to allow folks that are already in the workforce to retool their skills, and that's pretty exciting to me. As a homeowner, I checked my property tax bill this morning. I pay $60 a year for the bond that's going to be retiring that this is going to replace. That's five bucks a month, $1.25 a week. I pay more than that for Netflix. I consider that an incredible margin, even though my kids are grown and they're already in the workforce and they don't even live in Oregon. Creating those opportunities for our youth, for our existing workforce, for our marginalized and underrepresented populations in career areas that are absolutely essential now and can be retooled for the needs of the future is just amazing. And I am glad to be able to pay that. And I, yesterday, we voted, and we voted for this bond. So, I guess the last two things I'll say, and I'm going to be quiet, is for me wearing my economic development hat, this approach to career technical education and career connected learning is absolutely nimble, responsive, and future-ready form of economic development. It's investing in our workforce now and in our future, and that helps up the economic vitality of all of Lincoln County. And my last thought is, the reason I wanted to run for Zone 3 of the Oregon Coast Community College Board of Education was because of this effort. I believe that strongly. So, I hope you'll join us and support it, and thank you so much for your time.
Do you have any questions? Scott, did you have a question?
I did, for these two.
Yeah.
The target market for potential students, is that primarily within Lincoln County or is that? With the UNEC students? Things like the aquarium science program, that is a rarity. So, there are students that come from all over the country, and some even from overseas for that particular program. And that would probably be the case with aquaculture as well. But things like welding, the community colleges are primarily based in your area of focus, and can you expand on that?
So, 98% of our students are from Lincoln County. The only ones are mostly from aquarium science because it's a specialized program that attracts people from outside.
Sure, you can wonder why welders are using them a lot. Send them a little email, let them know.
Are there questions from the council? Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, I have a question for the doctor and then one for Paul. And first of all, just say, you know, I think career education is absolutely imperative. It's just ironic to me that our high schools here had welding and all sorts of career programs 15 and 20 years ago. I think there was even one school here that built an affordable house every year. Why those went away, I have no idea. My question for you, doctor, is, has there been a marketing survey done to show that there is a pool of students here ready and available for these programs?
Yes, so we have worked with our school district. We partner with that as well. And all our CTD programs, we need to have an advisory board based on industry partners who are going to provide and hire those students. And we get their feedback on what they need, and that's why we decided what programs are going to be offered. We were not offering a program that we know we're not going to have enrollment because that's obviously funding that comes through tuition and state.
And the welding program, I mean, there's a waiting list on that well beyond the capacity of the college right now to be able to fulfill. So.
Right. Well, that was my next question. Paul, I'll direct that to you. Is, I've heard that in the advertising that these will create jobs for Lincoln County. But do we have any welding jobs here?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And, I mean, right now, the most obvious ones are in the support cluster around maritime and commercial fishing. There's a lot of activity around the port of Toledo. But also, if you talk to any construction trades, sort of general construction that does metal building fabrication, they're always looking for welders. There's, you know, small market welders. That's one of those things. There's some other things that like, you know, fire sciences or something like that, where there has to be more survey work done to see when that program can be developed and offered. But welding, there's absolutely a need for those people now well beyond our ability locally to be able to meet that need.
Sounds good. Do you have an age limit for students?
That's a joke.
No, bad joke. Okay, I'll think of the same.
But there are times when I sometimes feel like, maybe it's time for career training. But I mean, what I mean.
That's what I was thinking. From city council to marine welding.
Any other questions for the judge?
Well, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Would you with Commissioner McReap, please? Uh, may I just say?
Sure.
Good job. I'll talk to Mr. Beasley.
We'll be on the 3rd, oops, at 4:00. And I've been spending a lot of time talking to people for possible cash locations, primarily rural properties. We have, we're looking at a suggestion for, something around the post office in back of the title pool. So, that's ongoing. I also talked to, I think it's James Borny or Jimmy Borny. He's with the, it's known as HOA, but it's association with the back forty of us here. Talking to him about the possibility of putting cash there. Haven't heard back from him. So, we're, you know, we're looking at opportunities. And we are soon going to, our committee is going to be working at the caches using shrink wrap material. We have sleeping bags, we have blankets, things like that. We want to smash them and get them really, really stackable and has more room in the caches that we do have. And so, we're looking to form some type of day that everybody can do this, or most of us can do this. And we've gone forward with ordering our first batch of freeze-dried food from a company called Redwise. Get that going. And then on the eighth, we have our event at the community center with Samantha Buckley. Put an email, sent a phone call to her. I have a sort of, sorts of agenda that I'm suggesting for her. I want her to give feedback on that. I'm going to talk to her also about advertising. This previous, when we had this type of event, the county advertised for us. We want to make sure that we're still doing that, that they're ready to do that. And then Lincoln County is sponsoring the event for evacuation assembly on the 14th and 15th at the airport by Newport. So, I'm going to be attending that. So, that's like an all-day thing from like 7:00 to 4:00 for two days. So, I hope it doesn't rain. It's going to be outside, so that's all that I have. Thank you.
Any questions for Joyce?
I hear you say you're getting smashed.
I'm sorry? What was the question?
The que, the. My question seriously is, do we have room for all the stuff that we're buying?
We, it's in there right now, but we want to smash it down as much as we can in order to put the freeze-dried food in because that's going to my garage until we can make room. Thank you. You're welcome.
Alrighty. Harper?
Yeah, Harper Commissioner, it's dark on April, so we'll have a report for you in June.
Oh, perfect. I'm looking for it. I don't see planning, I don't see parks, and I don't see scanning. At this time, I'll take public comments. Are there any public comments? See any? Okay. Alrighty. Under unfinished business, let's go to the proposal for the property line adjustment agreement with Mr. White. Kim, you've been working in tips like on this. I'll let you, does everyone have a chance to read it? And.
There's nothing new to add except that the agreement he agreed to after we moved the utility work on it, there was some debate out and forth regarding the timing because he wanted it done by June 1st, then by July 1st. And it took some time to explain that the code dictates the time and for steps, but our attorney was able to get that taken care of. So, what you have in front of you is the final property line agreement. This needs to be approved and signed. And the second document is because the property line, however, line adjustment will take some time. We've been working again with our insurance provider and on back and forth, come up with some kind of indemnity agreement that would allow the neighbors for kids to salmon, enhance, you know, those salmon enhancement moves that they're through, to be able to go see the salmon and do the fin clipping in July if it's not settled by then. So, all of these have been approved, edited, whatever, by C.A. White, as a attorney. So, it just need council review.
Is there a motion to accept the property line adjustment agreement as presented?
Mayor, I make a motion to approve this agreement on the property line with Mr. C.A. White.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second to accept the property line adjustment agreement as presented. Is there any discussion on the motion?
I'm, no, just going to work on this, Kim. I appreciate your work. Thank you.
I'm going to have time to answer, you see the terms. True. Any other discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Under new business, we have a, an applicant for our council position. Bill, do you want to come on up?
Sure.
And that his resume and answers to the questions came out in the packet this afternoon. Does everyone have a chance to read that? Thank you, Bill, and welcome. I think your questions to the answers were fabulous and it really warmed my heart that you're interested to step forward and help us with all of the things we have going on here. So, I will open the floor up for any further questions for Bill as to. I am crazy enough to want to surf on the city council of Deco Bay. Yes, yeah, please. Keep going.
For those of you that don't know me, you know, this is the second time I've gone through this process, and I will commend the council on the fact that we've changed this process to include this questionnaire because it really helped me as a candidate kind of figure out, you know, where do I really think that I fit in? And I think it gives you guys an opportunity to kind of understand who we are as opposed to just looking at somebody's resume. And my resume, while it has 35 years' worth of experience on it, really has nothing related to what my thoughts are about governing the city and the things that I think are important and that kind of thing. So, I commend the council on the changes that were made for that process.
And Bill, I served with Bill on the Financial Advisory Committee when we had that going, and he was very, very helpful on several areas of that. And he's sort of being on our budget committee now. And I know I'd be a huge, huge asset on that committee as well, so.
Yes, Brian? Yeah. I have a question on, it was the first page, I think, about affordable housing. And just a little bit concerned, I just, or just needing clarification about zoning, mention zoning modifications as a option for affordable housing. What would you have in mind?
Yeah, so I, I am, nothing really specific other than, you know, if we have restrictions specifically in the code that do not allow for housing, permanent housing, that we potentially look at what those restrictions are and what we as a, as a council may be able to do to modify those to allow for housing in those zones. But I'm thinking particularly like the industrial type of zoning. If there's a way that we could allow affordable housing in that zone, that might, that might help to alleviate some of the challenge.
Yeah, I'm thinking that we might need like some enhancement of our code to let, to allow or encourage smaller home development. I'll just stand. I appreciate you all the work so far that you've done for the city. It's tremendous. And though it's like you have a good background for our community, so we appreciate it, aren't our council.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we.
We have a ballot in front of you.
Oh.
This is a ballot.
Stand with your example.
Oh, thank you. So, what happens now is we have to vote on this. And when we have the ballots all in, then we will welcome you. And Bill has agreed to actually join us, our council this evening.
Well, that's assuming that anybody votes for him.
Okay. If he's collected, and so we just.
They're back to the store and.
I know. Yeah, we got it. Two minutes.
I prepared just in case the council was going to hold a ballot. I didn't, I didn't tell him I was going to do this, so he might not have been available.
I'm going to apologize for my lack of grasp on brothers' rules. That's embarrassing.
Awesome. We have a seven or six zero votes, so welcome aboard, Bill. If you want to join us, Kim has a form that you need to, just, we'll do it at your seat. Your new seat.
My new seat.
Do you want to drop any pens?
I have a few after me. Aye, Jill Masala.
Aye, Jill Masala.
Do- Masala, sorry. Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Oregon.
Of the State of Oregon.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
And the Charter and Ordinances.
Of the City of Deboe Bay.
Of the City of Deboe Bay.
And will faithfully, impartially.
And will faithfully and impartially.
And honorably perform the duties.
And honorably perform the duties.
Of the City Council. Of a city councillor.
Of a city councillor.
To fill the remaining term pending December 31st.
To fill the remaining term pending December 31st.
2024.
2024.
To which I have been appointed to.
To which I have been appointed to.
The best of my ability.
The best of my ability.
Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
I believe the. The seventh.
The seventh.
Nice number for you.
Jill Joyce and I will meet with you and bring you up to date on all of the things going on with the. Maybe in the next few days, if you have a chance to bring it up to the council.
Sure.
And I apologize, we don't have any printed packets for you.
I already have a packet.
Oh, okay, okay. Alrighty, so coming up is, we're going to have Jill Penon and Scott. Quick, may I talk to us about our energy grant application that you received a copy of this afternoon? I think we're really close to getting this ready to submit. Our deadline on this is May 10th, so just thought we'd open it up for any questions, some folks. Fran, did you have a question?
Thank you, thank you, thanks for coming. In the packet, it mentions City Hall as the place for the focus of this hub. But another point in the packet or in one of the questions, it mentions the community center as the warming center and sort of implies that the energy backup would be there. Am I misinterpreting that or is there need for clarification?
It'll be included in the master plan. Initially, this building will be the primary source of the first grant. As more are developed and grow, that will be included as well. We have a number of sites throughout the city that are designated emergency shelters, fuel stations, pump houses, things of that nature. So the primary objective is to go for two weeks without uninterrupted electrical power. And we're headed towards fuel cells.
So, and I did not read it really, really carefully, but it might need some clarification.
I understand.
I got confused. And then the other thing, I had a question of, is there, does it make it less competitive? If we could sell energy back to the grid?
At this point in time, we're not in the energy selling business. This is strictly a backup system. We won't sell anything back to the grid until that's addressed later. Initially, this emergency operation is just take care of standby machines.
But we'll have, we could use it if City Hall can lower our energy bills, for example, even though we're not selling it back, we're not really. Because if we have, I mean, we need to generate, we're not just going to turn this, use whatever the situation is. So we're only on when electricity goes out or are we?
That's it, it's a standby system. We're not going to use that as another income gainer under the terms of the agreement that we ended to with our local provider. We were really clear that we're not going to do that. Now, some other folks have been doing that, that's on that. But in our particular case, just to make things nice and smooth, we will go from there.
Wonderful, should be a wonderful question, thank you for all this work on it.
Well, thank you.
So my other question then is, if we're only depending on it for emergencies and turn it on only, then how do we know that the systems work and how much energy they generate? I mean, is there a test, I mean, every month we tested and.
Yes, every month it gets tested and certified. And the groups that we're going to work with, that would be part of their mainest contract.
And so we charge, I'm sorry, I have another question. So we charge a battery while we're generating this green energy? And then we could use that battery power during the times you're testing and stuff like that or not?
I don't really understand.
So we're going to have to store the energy because the wind doesn't always blow and the sun doesn't always shine, right? So there would be a battery backup that then.
Possibly, once the study's done, what's the best way of going? And our predetermination is a fuel cell. Fuel cell is active, waiting to go at any time. For any duration up to two weeks is our plan. Some energy is stored as both in a battery for short term, a few hours, and then also as hydrogen. We recharge that, so that would be the plan. There's a lot of politics involved in generating power. Especially with terms of owning grid tie connections and transmission lines.
Even with a central link and P U D, huh?
Especially.
Well, thank you, I appreciate you all this work on it.
Okay, well, yes sir.
Can you tell me what these fuel cells do, but what will they power? I noticed the projects here at City Hall, so is it designed to keep City Hall running? Is that a main point?
Number one, this is the number one priority of this building here.
Okay.
Command post, communication center, safety area below us, a central hub of knowledge and skill from the experts. You know, that we can coordinate the tap and figure out what our problems are and how to fix it.
What kind of square footage for this need?
Four by four, four foot by four foot.
The button is failing.
It's small, it has its, you'll be amazed when you see it. Well, in the coming educational side, we'll start bringing everybody up to speed with what we're doing, where it's going, trying to best benefit people. It's really starting quite a lot of things.
First, we have to get the grant.
Yes. And again, the purpose of the grant is to design the system that then gets funded later through either another grant or some other means to build. So we're not going to buy anything with this grant, we're just going to buy the engineering to get the design. The design will be usable anywhere, including private residences. So it could be customized for each individual site. Whatever the demand is for that site will be determined from the engineering standpoint. Make it the most efficient, cost-effective, secure source of electricity we can have.
I'm sorry, I'll let other people talk before I.
It's okay, this is energy, this is what we want to hear. Everyone, everyone has questions, the only question that you want to ask is anything you want.
Well, except I'm letting, I should let other people in the room talk before I talk. So I wasn't clear that you've already settled on a hydrogen fuel cell. Are you closing the door to just plain battery backups for two weeks?
We're not closing the door to anything, but they're the leading candidate right now. That's what the engineering study will determine. We've done a lot of work on the research side of this already. Communication, every, every system has a point that's great and the point is horrible. So not horrible, but not as productive as we can use.
So we will be presented with some options?
Yes. It probably involves battery. That's the current design of these fuel cell systems has a battery between the consumer and where the fuel cell. The, mainly because of the battery has an instantaneous spin up time and it provides clean power continuously. The purpose of the fuel cells is to get battery power. And the grid can do that too, but the problem is a two week battery is about as big as a room. And so there's, there's design issues, especially on the small side, like for certain smaller buildings or certain instances where it is. We're going to lean towards a system for everything so we don't have to have multiple systems and multiple issues. And all work the same, so anyone will be able to make the work. And then we'll grow from there.
No question.
Yes.
From your previous talk about your plan and what have you, as I recall, you've done this already in different places, is that correct?
Yes, a different type of plant.
Okay.
Green energy plants, those were, you know, modified diesels that do rice hall, sugarcane, coconut, any sort of ag waste, those plants. That won't work for us specifically because then we're up against a grid tie. We have to move the power. Three things that we talked about is the people, the customer, the connections, and the machine. Never are all three in the same spot. So we would have to tap into someone else's lines if we have an issue. So that's primarily it. Nothing works the same at every spot. You know, we looked at micro hydro, we looked at solar, we looked at wind, we looked at. Wind is still a possible candidate, especially micro turbines, what they call vertical access turbines. They look like little tulips and they spin around. And it's really neat, but it may or may not work depending on where it is. So that's what we'll determine and see the best option.
I think it's a good option here if the wind.
Yes, possibly.
Possibly, you know, thank you. So do we need to make a motion to.
Do we need a motion to accept? No, I mean, you can do it if you want to do it that way. You've already given your letter of support.
Yeah.
So it's just the reason I said I'd bring this back to you, it's not the final draft. They have a consultant they've been working with who's going to provide some more narrative. And it'll be submitted on the test, so there's a few more, but I wanted to show you where it was going.
I keep everybody in the loop, you know, there's the communications, why with everything? And there's, there's multiple ways of doing multiple things. We're trying to find the best efficient, cost-effective system that we can use for everyone in the region.
Thank you very much.
Like a group support.
At some point, we'll have to have a discussion though about, this grant is a reversible grant. So you have to pay the money upfront. We can ask, and I did in the application for like a 30% down. So if we get the grant, I've asked for 30% down payment, if you will, of the grant. But that's something we want to talk about for budgeting, is making sure that we put something in there for, and even get the grant, because we'll have to be able to pay the money, a lot of that upfront portion.
Yeah, this may be you where we ask Paul for Lincoln County another development grant. Because especially if this is a system that can be used elsewhere, I would think he would think so.
It will be the starter course for these. I think with the amount of enthusiasm and energy that everyone's displayed, it's going to go.
We had good response at the meeting, we hope, it was wonderful. Any other questions?
Okay.
Well, we'll wait from a few more things from the consultants and we'll get it going.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you guys driving into Lorient? Sorry, are you guys driving into Lorient?
The Lorient, the.
They haven't figured out how to make a bus faster yet.
Yeah.
Yay!
Thank you, alrighty. Okay, we have got a liquor license application from Soul K Food, the new restaurant going near downtown. Do they need to be presented to make this application?
No, it's not been standard as far as I know.
Okay. So is there a motion to accept?
No, I move we accept the application of Soul K Food.
Okay, is there a second? It's been moved to second to equip the liquor license application as a benefit from. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alrighty, thank you. Kim's been working hard on trying to get our finances into order and she had some conversations from Summer Sears. And Kim, do you want to bring us up to date on this?
I went in her last year, but she just didn't have the bandwidth to take us on. She's known for her support of municipal government and helping cities out of sticky situations like helping us out with our grants or getting us on board with audits. So one of the first things she would be doing, actually one of the first things I want her to do if she's brought on is we have two horrible tracking spreadsheets right now that none of us can figure out what the heck they are. One is for the fuel category, which is a nightmare to do all the time. And the other one is for bonds, and the way they're tracking.
The what?
The bonds.
Okay.
And I'm like, these are nightmare sheets, you know, where Diane's filling it in and she's like, I don't know what I'm, I'm just plugging in numbers. So that would be, we have a lot of these anticipated way. They did track some things that I firmly believe there's a much simpler way to do it and just haven't had anybody to sit down and say, yeah, this is ready to do. But the big thing is getting our folks ready for all this. And the auditor situation is a little more challenging, although I had another one reach out to me. So I think I'm going to try to debate what I'm going to do about that. I may just do some individual news to some of my new ones that I got from some other folks, so.
That was my question.
And would you discuss within parameters of our budgeting for the CPA's business?
Well, I'm more concerned though about, we put it, we put it out for bid and she's the only one that responded?
No, this is something entirely different. This is, remember when I came to you about a year or so ago and I asked to hire a CPA to help me out? Well, that CPA ended up not working out because they got busy, they couldn't help us. This is a CPA that helps the city separate from our auditors. Because with auditors, there's only so much they can do. They can't advise you on a lot of things that a regular CPA can because they're not allowed to mix. They have, they have to keep themselves separate, so they can't tell me things.
So we did put the auditor one out to bid?
Yes, and I got one person who we emailed a few times. I don't know if she didn't like my honest responses to what was going on because I am a hurt summer again. But then somebody I had to let them all inform about, obviously a month later got a hold of the form, just applied, kept in their mail. And she reached out to me and she said, hey, you refuse to look and I'd like to talk about. This is actually from a firm, the name is escaping me right now, but Coons, they're a good one. So I'm going to, I wanted to question about someone trying to get all their writing.
So with the CPA, you're saying we have, we have it in our budget that's already been approved?
Yes.
This range is pretty huge, 36 to 65, what do we have in that? So we carry through. It would carry through to Mr.'s budgeting, this, this would just be the initial to get us started.
Right, and she's not saying she's going to have to spend that. She's saying based on what I told her about what she's going to have to do and the fact that some things she will have to be here to do them. A lot of that's more like the time her to be there. She will only build what she, just like we do, you know, she'll build us as we, as we go on. So she's hoping she can do most of it online, but she really feels she won't be able to based on what I told her about our systems.
So she's prepared?
So.
She'll be pissed.
Yeah.
Wait, wait.
No, I don't think she wants to say.
Oh, she doesn't want to?
No, I don't, she's just saying, no, what she's saying is that she doesn't want to have to come over here unless she has to come over.
Right.
There was such a broad range in the, in her low end and her high end. I just wondered if she really understands the scope of the work because it seemed like it was, you know, kind of open-ended for her. She just kind of threw a high number.
Oh, no, she, we talked at length about it. And she is working with another city, I know she told me the name, I have numbers where she's helping out in a similar situation. But no, she fully understands and she has a municipal background in this. She was the one I wanted prior to getting the one we had, and he works for her. She just wasn't available. She's got a good reputation among the cities as working on herself.
And how soon can she start?
Um, probably whenever we wanted to. If we wanted like to have her start, I, like I said, I would have her review these spreadsheets because we need to have it very quickly.
So were there restrictions on the budget item to say that it had to be CPA? Because she's obviously not doing CPA work, right? She's, she's coming in and she's going to be a book, she's going to fix the books, but she's not actually doing the audit. So did the budget say it was audit work or did the budget say it was accounting work?
It's accounting.
It's just accounting work.
Okay.
Kim had a question. That this seems unusual to me to have almost accounting firms not make, um, hard to find. If when we find them, they're not helping out well. I mean, is it a state organ in your opinion that's the issue or?
They used to not be a problem, but COVID kind of crashed and failed things, so they lost a lot of people. But the more problem is a lot of the seniors are retiring and the schools, they're not putting out auditors. They're not putting out these, the students, they don't want these work. Um, remember we had, um, I forget who did, but that, when I went to the Government Financial Officers Association, there were several auditors speaking to that. It's, there is not enough of them and more of us. And, uh, gas bad, the rules get more complicated, it requires a lot of specialization. And the thing I like mostly about Summer is that she has municipal CPAs, so not just general CPA. Because we did try to have a general CPA come in and see about helping us out. We've tried it and it doesn't work because they don't understand gas fees and all those rules like that. Whereas now she does because she has municipal government background.
Another question. I know we had that software, I don't remember the name of it, that just wasn't working for us. Is, is she finding that software responsible for so many of these other cities?
She has not gotten into any of our stuff yet. She's only dealing with what I'm saying. And what I've learned since I've been in here is the software isn't great, but we can get data out of it. We just can't get it in a way that everybody's really familiar with. Like I can't run and, and that doesn't really work into government, a profit loss statement. Bound sheets, you know, these are, I can get you what you need, just I have to pull it from different pieces. So what she's going to help us do is take these reports, help us pull this data in and put it in Excel spreadsheets and manipulate the spreadsheets in a way that an auditor can simply... That's what I'm hoping.
Wow, thank you.
Because I don't have the skill to do pivot tables and all that other stuff. Um, so all I can do is just give her the data, but a lot of it, she would need access to our financial system so she could run reports, pull the data and that sort of stuff.
So we're going to give the auditor a clean sheet report?
That's what I want to get her, the, or him, whatever it is.
Well, I, this just seems to be maybe absolutely a necessary step, uh, on our way to getting these audits.
I'm not trying to spend the money, but I just, I can't do it alone, just, and Diane, she's can't.
Well, we've been in a problem for years, you know?
Yeah, and, uh, the longer we go, the worse it's getting.
The, the one thing I would say is this, uh, in, in this upcoming budget, that this position be spelled out, I mean, I can think of really not, not many things that are of a higher priority than this. And that, uh, that funding be secure in the face of other requests.
Okay, I can put it as like a long-term auditing, so when, you know, I can put it as, I even specifically call this auditing support. I've already budgeted for audits, for the audits, what I think is going to end up costing us.
But you can't even do an audit until you get this done, right?
We can, we can throw the boxes of, the boxes of past the three years out of. But then they would turn around and say, well, I need you to get BGL, I need you to give me that, so I need you to give me that. And that's where we went into it. But they can do it the old school way.
So, please, I have a follow-up.
Yeah, that's not.
Greg was asking, so, um, this engagement objectives scope and timing is just really broad. And it doesn't say anything about what people, what is done with the existing audit we have. Do we ever get that corrected with our comments and is she going to look at it?
She is.
It says it's...
That's her first go.
And she agrees with you. She did a quick look at it, Council Rec, and she said there's stuff wrong with it. And she thinks ISO needs to fix it.
So, is this statement in the, um, page, it's on, um, fifty-six of ninety-three, engagement objectives scope and timing? Is that specific enough? Do we, you know, is, is it, is that broad enough or specific enough to get us? You know, to not keep us out of trouble? And then the other thing is she says she may use subcontractors, but the only dollar figure is for her time at two hundred an hour. And if she has subcontractors, they're not getting that same rate, I would hope, and that she wouldn't charge us that two hundred dollar an hour rate.
Um, that two hundred dollar an hour rate is actually a discount from her and it's really low.
Well.
So, um, she has in her subcontractors, one of the things we could do is set requirements that they have to be measured level experience to her. Um, we should see here.
And then that, that statement of objectives, uh, you could provide some pieces on that too, that would be helpful. Anybody else have a question about finance?
Yeah, financial recovery services, absolutely. Um, it's broad. But if we get too specific, then I, I don't know how to be more specific, meaning there's a lot of range I need to do. If we wanted to focus on her helping us get through the audits, there might be pieces that I require that I need her to do look at and aren't really audit, but that still need to, I'll need to get through the audit.
So it should say probably at the direction of the city administrators that you reported.
Okay.
I've been, because it's so open-ended, um, I am a little bit concerned. I mean, it's, it's all done in good faith, but contracts are contracts, right?
We could do, we could do what I do with, um, uh, our city engineer, task orders.
What, I'm sorry?
She, with, uh, when we want, when we talk about a project, we want John to do, he fills out a task order. He gives me a rough estimate of what he thinks it will cost. We put a layout of scope of what we do. I could just ask her to say, we want to just amend this in food. You gave me a task order. We, do you?
You might think that's a great idea.
It's the same thing I do with Supoya if we have them doing it.
Okay. What do you think, very, very?
Yeah, I think we could add that in there.
Okay.
It should be acceptable for everyone.
She'll be perfectly fine right there. So, and then we can agree upon the scope and the estimate that time.
And what about a subcontractor?
I have...
Portions of work may be completed with the help of a supervised subcontractor, whose time will be given on my invoice. The rate.
She doesn't, you're right, she does not, pardon me, Councilor, uh, she does not note, note that that rate should be cheaper. Most of the time it is, I will have her amend it to give me an hourly rate for that. That should be less than hers.
Thank you. Um, Kim, would, would that depend on the task, do you?
Not really, no. If she, if it's a subcontract, well, it's a subcontract, but she says the subcontractor she's going to use has the same rest of experience and et cetera, et cetera, as she does, then it would be the two hundred. But if she says that the subcontractor, contractor is an intern or somebody just out of school or whatever, um, I could get more specific about that with her and say, here's what the council's concern is, how can we make this less muddy?
Yeah, I mean, with those changes, I'd be okay with that.
Yeah, I, I can make sure we do them. She'll, I'm sure she will go along with it. If she doesn't, we don't.
Well, we'll come back here then.
Okay.
I'd like you to keep us informed, uh, on her work so that we know what the goal of her work is. You know, she sets out, is she working with a certain year? And what is the goal and the timeframe that we're going to be doing that?
I can put first, I can project my project updates report. I could just include accounting, audit, support or whatever we're doing on that and then let you know what we're doing in there with just a task order, is that you know? That's her.
Do you feel like we're making any progress on audits? I mean, how would you characterize our audits?
On audits? No. On finances, yes. Um, I really, this last two weeks, you, you had the result in front of you of a very deep dive into everything on our finances, SDCs, LGIB, TRT, um... Our new Councilor has been real helpful with that. Um, so I feel better about knowing where we are financially as far as how we look. And we're looking, we're, we're actually looking pretty healthy. But we've also got some big expenses coming up too. So we're going to need to look healthier. But at least I feel for the first time in a place that I know where our money is. There is a few things I think after she, uh, Diane is working on updating some of our, our renewals. So that's going to look very different. So it's a lot of the, the money's been moved to the bank accounts, but vision, she needs to update vision. So once we get, and she's working hard on that, once we get that, you'll see a better reflection of where we're at. But financially, we're, we're still looking, we're looking, we're strong. As long as we don't have a huge surprise.
Yeah.
Sense.
So with those changes of task orders and the fee for the subcontractor, when we, um, accept, um, the contractor or the CPA?
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to a second to accept the, um, contract from Summer Sears, CPA.
As, as revised.
Yeah, as revised, as noted. Um, is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I don't know, thank you. Either way, at the next meeting, I'll bring that contract, so you can see our, our final version, so you can see.
Alrighty. We have a, uh, safe streets for all, non-binding letter of commitment. Do you want to bring us up to date on that, Kim?
So this was kind of something that was dropped in, into my lap through, uh, council government. So one of my goals this year is to find all the money I can find and get us all the money I can get us. Um, but there's a lot, so this one kind of fell into my lap. The safe streets for all, I've been hearing about it, but I didn't really think I really had much about whether or not we had anything for it. Well, the council governments, they have a grant person on their staff now. And she reached out to all of the city members and administrators, the county, and said, hey, look at this. So we had this, I gave you the PowerPoint presentation, we had the meeting and she started talking about what we, things we can do. So the radar signs, the radar speed signs. We already know we want them, right? Okay, so I've been working getting quotes. So we kind of folded this into my, our, what we want, that money that we want, which is basically, it's not just to get the signs, but it's to do a study to see how effective they are. So the grant, it, a grant, our little piece will get us the signs and it would do the data analysis to see how effective it is for. You know, just in case we want to put more in later, you know, um, who knows? But it's, it's a way for us to look at as part of a bigger grant. And because it's a bigger community grant, like a Lincoln County grant, they said that it's better, it, it has a better chance of being funded. They really believe that because of what the conversations they had. This non-binding letter just says that they figured out what our portion would be based on population and everybody else. They're just saying, hey, you know, just if we get the grant, this is what it would cost people there. Considering I'm just budgeting twenty-two to twenty-five thousand for the radar signs and everything like that, seven thousand plus, what did I put in there? I forgot how much I put in there, three hundred, yeah, for grant administration.
So my question is, are we going, and this is going to take a while to get the grant, right? When is the award?
Uh, did she tell me when it was? I didn't get the impression it was going to be that long, what did she tell you?
Because I don't necessarily want to wait to get signs if it's going to take a year to be awarded.
I still put it in our budget. I, I went ahead and put the signs in our budget anyway.
The full cost of the signs.
Mm-hmm.
So could, yeah, I'm fine with this, this letter, but I would like that clarified. Not only what, which of the, this grant is given to the county would be... Because it's not going to be, so the, it says, it looks like the deadline is, um...
I see those now, May sixteenth, August twenty-ninth.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's different rounds or whatever, but if it's May fifteenth, that's fine, but if it's, if this is a, um...
Ours is May fifteenth, the one she's shooting us for is May fifteenth.
So.
Um...
I don't see it, you know, I couldn't use it well.
She did put it in here. Um, a lot of the grants now are being awarded the end of June, but I can't say for certain that one is.
So, you know, they're, once it gets funded, then they're accomplishing things over a year and a half period. But I didn't see when it's going to be awarded. But, you know, we could do both. We could have signs installed sooner than later with what we paid for and then have additional signs in other places or...
Yeah.
But I'd still like to know when, likely, because I don't want to spend money if we're going to get it soon.
I'm going to see. She didn't put anything in here. And I'm not seeing any in the paperwork, pay details.
I haven't seen it either.
Well, we don't have to, I think we still can give the letter of support now, but...
I will ask a question.
Yeah.
See if there's clarification on that.
Yeah.
Um, looks like there are supplemental activities within an eighteen-month period, but we still don't know when that eighteen months starts. So I will find out what she's looking at, but I got the feeling it was sooner rather than later, but I will find out for sure.
Is there a motion to accept the, um, non-binding letter of commitment as presented?
With the circulation that we get, ideas, would it be awarded?
I'm second, yeah.
I, I didn't move.
I, I, but we're going to write it in.
You, you seconded.
I didn't.
Okay, so it's been moved to a second and to accept the non-binding letter of commitment, uh, for the Lincoln County Safe Streets for All? Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, maybe. And we'll find that out and, uh, get back to you.
Um, Catherine.
Um, we have the budget for the solid waste consortium, consortium, um, to look at.
I never presented, present, I didn't present it to you this, like, last year, but I'm thinking about this one.
This is the first trip.
Well, this is the first time.
Yeah.
Um, I thought I would just make sure this year, you know, and see if anybody had any questions needing any clarification, anything like that.
Well, with our three point seven percent of the overall budget, uh, our six thousand that we spent is pretty minimal. But it's good to see what, what's going on overall, um, with their work on this, so are there any questions?
I don't know if I need to, I put action in there, but I don't know if I need a motion or anything. I just needed to just make sure there's no objections, that the council has no questions or objections to.
Put it in the budget?
Yeah, with their budget, so. Okay. Alright, then when I go to the meeting, I'll say council's on board.
We all concur. Um, okay. We have an ordinance, uh, that needs to be amended, ordinance, uh, three four eight dash twenty-four.
This is not a perjury. This is just a video, a draft.
A draft?
Yes, not a perjury. Sorry. I took this, I took this under, I understand, sorry.
That's fine.
No, I wanted to talk to a council about this and get some feedback.
Okay.
And I know Council Rec usually has some good feedback and I wanted to give her a chance to do it ahead of time. Um, but if I could explain or, so, um, Jenny Broxton, she is online with us. Uh, she's our utility building specialist and she's been doing an amazing job and getting a lot of plans cleaned up, getting money collected, um, doing, uh, the money collecting. doing uh, the money collecting, I knew everybody would like. She's been, uh, we have not had any money collected from the coast guard for years. She got all that money in, ooh, it was about twenty thousand dollars, so I think it was twenty thousand. But anyway, she's been doing a phenomenal job. Um, but we've run into kind of something that I noticed when I shortly got back here, that the city's past practice has been to give one. And I put something, and I wanted to tell you because I, I got some clarification. Um, put one thirty-dollar late fee versus the tarred listing of per customer. So like if somebody viewed out, they would, the late fee waivers start over again. So they didn't care what reason, they just said, okay, you get, I, I would sign on home one late fee waiver. And I saw, there were some coming in, but then now there's a whole lot more coming in. I have eight or nine on my desk right now. And I thought, you know what, the reasons, there's, there's reasons to do it and reasons that aren't good reasons. And what we've been getting right now is a lot related to the post office. And they're telling me I didn't get their mail. I didn't get my mail. I didn't get my mail. I didn't get my bill. I didn't see my bill. You know, um. One, I can't hear you in there, you can see, but when you, we can't fight the post office. Y'all ask y'all us, they're going through this right now. They can't fight the post office. They're on a promise with theirs. I don't know for sure that they're not getting their mail. I know this is what we're being told. We have no way to verify that's the case. So I would like this, that's why I'm asking us to come up with a more um, more solid late program for billing and to clarify some of these goals to say. What I've found in a lot of cities, I ask my fellow cities what they do. And most of them will say, no, you know, we give a waiver for the fact that they didn't get their mail. Um, we give hardship waivers. So one of the things I put in there was that extraordinary circumstances, but we talked about it, we want to change it to hardship. Um, one person I remember shortly after starting, um, she, her mother died. She didn't have time to deal with going in to check in her mother's mail and dealing with all that. Until after, we also felt the state care of her. That is kind of a, a good reason for a waiver, you know. Or, you know, um, you know, that they've never been late before. Um, somebody had an accident, you know, or something like that. There is other reasons to do it besides I didn't get my bill or I didn't see my bill. Or I didn't know my bills due, you know. We have, those are all excuses that we have. So I'm asking, Jenny and I wrote to ask the council to look at um, changing our policy to, now I put in here that it's once per year. The council can choose to make that a little more, like saying, okay, well, maybe they have two hardships. I don't know, but I put in one trip, you have it, then they clarify with me, it's once per time. They like the once per year only from the standpoint, it means they don't have to go back to the beginning of time to see if that account ever got a late fee. We all have a problem we have is um, as she has found out, a lot of late fees were not charged. Um, so a lot of people have been having late, uh, late, late and not ever being charged a fee. So as soon as they get noticed, they're gonna get a charge of fee and she's charging them. Um, that's when they call and say they want their waiver because they didn't get their bill.
I would make a comment. I, I think most people know when they don't get the bill. I don't understand why they would use that excuse.
Until every other month. And so a lot of people lose track of, you know. I'm always like, oh, my bill's due.
I don't, I don't see that. I think people know when their bills are due. At least I, I would.
I don't.
I don't either.
Can we set up for um, auto pay? We, we try to get people set up for auto pay, but a lot of them don't want to.
No, I mean, you know, you could do that. Yes.
That's what I've always heard.
Of course, good.
The impression that I got from your notes was that it's a lot of recurring, that, that these are people who have had waivers in the past.
Not waivers in the past, but should have been charged late fees because they're late all the time.
Okay.
But they never were charged a late fee. Jenny's charging late fees now, or let me do it. We, we call that every, uh, Jenny, I don't know if you're listening, but what's the term that you guys call it? A uh, oh, it's not a late fee, it's the.
So it's actually called a posting fee. Reason it's called a posting fee is because it takes uh, my labor, my time, the guy's time, a lot of people's time and resources um, to print out these late fee letters, to make those phone calls. Um, and it's actually thirty dollars is, uh, it's conservative because we have to spend a lot of time trying to collect it. Um, and, and really the thing I, I've been seeing more than anything is uh, what you had said, is that there's a lot of people who have been late a whole lot of times, but never were held accountable. So as I'm going through, um, you know, I'm a billing guru. Um, if they don't pay in time and they do get a fee, and that's what they're reacting to is uh, is well, I didn't get a bill and if I don't have a bill, I'm not gonna pay you.
Okay.
Which is crazy, by the way.
So um, I think we could do things better communication wise, like on our website, you know, water bills are due, you know, um, or the post office note. I, especially after listening to the Food Bank proposal and the need, depot bay. Um, I think there's a lot of people on the edge. And um, thirty bucks doesn't sound like a lot and I know it's a lot of staff time and effort, but I think we should, I, I'm a little bit hesitant. I mean, I wouldn't stand in the way as people go forward with this ordinance. But I would uh, I don't, I think everybody deserves one time a year. And um, then better communication, you know, from all of, you know, on the website, if you posted it, posted whatever, and encouraging people to sign up again. Um, I know it's a lot of staff time, but um, I don't know. It's uh, it's hard for me because a lot of resources to um, kind of understand where people are coming from. And uh, I feel like we should be kind. Thirty dollars isn't that much and it's only one time a year for how it's sold. I think we could absorb that.
I have a follow-up on that. I think that we should encourage them to have a direct deposit.
We do. Jenny does all the time, whenever she can, but she still gets told more than she gets to get.
That would solve their problem.
We also post the bill due dates on the website. We don't go out when they say bills are due. I don't know anybody that does that. So my feeling, my personal feeling is I'm sixty years old and I pay my bills on time. If I don't, it's because um, I didn't for some reason. I didn't pay my water bill. Guess who's paying the thirty dollars? By this policy, if you don't do something, I can just say, hey, give me my thirty dollars back. There's my one fee waiver. That's the danger I have. If somebody truly had a reason that they needed one, maybe they were struggling that month. I would perfect, I could see that more. But that's not what we're getting. We're getting, I didn't get my bill. And to me, that seems less of a reason than somebody who's struggling. I firmly believe if, if the council feels like, I mean, I'm gonna go with whatever council may do, so I just, I just think that that's the wrong reason for giving that money on the table no matter how they do it. Because some of these people that are not paying, I, they live in nicer houses. They just have reasons they didn't get their bill.
Ms. Counselor.
So I, I would like to know why I'm being singled out for bills every time, all the time. And I just never miss a bill. I, I think we've heard from Jennifer, uh, the reason why we have to have a late fee. It costs a lot of money to manage this.
Ours are pretty low compared to other states.
And you know, I, I sometimes feel like we're just bleeding money here. You know, in a variety of places, or giving it away in a variety of uh, of ways. So I just would uh, think that we should continue to charge a late fee. And I don't know why we're even doing the, the, the waiver. That's just my feeling, justice. Which way are we gonna go on?
Um, I, I concur that, you know, we, we should be charging late fees. If, if, and if there's hardships, then Kim has authority to, to waive them.
And that's the message we can make clear, that we're not saying no waivers ever again. We're just saying for hardship. And you have to, you know, come and you have to, you know, explain, or you have to stay at, hey, this is where I'm at. I think we're more than anything very willing to work with anybody. We set up, we have one person and Jenny can speak to this, where he's been on three payment plans and he can't seem to get his act together. So we are trying to work with people, but at some point, we actually now, I think I've heard Jenny a couple times send them to this, remember that um, that site we found, that group that helps people out that have low income?
Angels Anonymous?
Not that one.
It's like a Lincoln County Consortium, but stack of resources. Well, when somebody is struggling, I try everything I can to help them, the payment plans or, you know, try to encourage them to reach out for help and give them the resources to do that. Um, I definitely want to be as kind as, as humanly possible. Um, but there's a big difference between being kind and, and enabling. So feel like when it's appropriate, they should pay it.
So I just want to make sure that if we do it, we do it for, if we offer, we do it for the right reasons and not for somebody like me who just didn't pay their bill because they weren't paying attention. Um, and I, I work in the office that pays bills, so I can't really use the excuse of not paying my mail. Although I didn't get my mail because I didn't check the box. But anyway. So I just want to make sure that if we, I, I'm still, I think we can still offer it, you know, um, but make it so that it has hardship versus other reasons.
There, I, I would like to move that we continue to offer hardship cases, but suspend the uh, one-time freebie uh, offer on late fees.
So um, Council, you'd like to just move forward with what was presented?
With our ordinance number three four eight.
Go ahead and move forward to bring it to a first reading next time?
I will, yes, that's what I would uh, offer.
Does the council agree with that as a whole?
You made a motion.
You don't need one. I was, I'm just looking for direction.
Okay. Is everyone in concurrence?
No, but we don't have a lot of consensus, so.
Okay, let's move forward. Okay. Bill?
Yeah, we're good.
Comfortable? Okay. Is comfortable? Okay, we'll put that ordinance.
I will be probably bringing to you hopefully in another month or so a complete redo of the wide ordinance. Um, public works need some things that need to be updated. Um, we need to work on, update the late adjustment policy and how that works and how that feels because we get, we get challenges with that as well. So um, we, so I would probably be bringing a complete redo of the wide ordinance. I'm just looking for the right.
So just for clarification, you are going to give us what, what you considered to be the final draft for three forty eight twenty-four?
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Okay, that was, I'm gonna see. Can you fast schedule a work session?
Yeah, that was one of the things I really want to do, like for instance, I'm gonna talk to you about some changes I want to do with the community hall, the rental application, fees, all that stuff. We've been having a rash of people trashing the place, leaving it messy. Um, we did keep one deposit. Um, so I'm working on, uh, it was bad, but he got, he was on duty that weekend. But uh, get a call on, was it seven thirty on Sunday?
Yeah.
Saying, hey, I need to, I need to find out if I can do my doll. They had it and they used it until one o'clock that night, then they left their stuff. And they were supposed to clean it up, so well, the next people that came in had it and went in and everything was still there. And they said, oh, we were gonna come back. And I was like, no, I didn't come get it. So um, they had other problems too, but we, so we've been having some things. But we want to talk a couple of things about like, for example, uh, hours, like from ten to one and that's it, you know. None more this morning until, you know, uh, whether or not we want to talk about uh, having a noise permit. So if they want to have certain high noise, they have to come and tell City Hall this is what they want to do. And we can set requirements and conditions, alcohol. Now, all of these things I'm proposing, some we would charge, I'm not looking at some of the, I'm not looking at these permits. They're called permits, but I'm looking at mostly City Hall knows. So if somebody asks, we have, we know why and then, so, but I want to talk about that, but there's a couple of things. It's just easier if I can get your thoughts about something first. Remember, we've talked about this before. So I'm hoping we can get one, but I might, I, if you don't want to have to change my mind, we just like, maybe do this in June instead. I'll talk to you about that. Um, I may still go ahead and bring the community hall a start to you because of the basic problems, but the formerly cussed out.
Just as an agenda item.
Yeah, because um, Carden, I got a rough draft. I've been working with their new um, maintenance guy. It was, our new staff was lost. Very happy it was our new staff, so we got lucky. But anyway, I'm, I'm still in that, so we'll talk in June about the work session with Carden. Changed my mind after spending a week on that for that.
Thank you for dealing with that community hall, that indoor issues.
I, I talked to another person who, she thought her sister was gonna clean it up and she didn't and it was her wedding, so.
What things are the worst? Uh, let's move on to city staff reports. Everybody got that in today's email? Do you have a chance to review that?
Please tell me everybody has driven down Collins, looked down Cook Avenue?
Yes, except.
There was a bunch of cars there tonight, or earlier this summer. I saw a truck laid out on that side of the street and she was there when I drove by at four thirty this night. I don't know what that means, but I asked our deputy to watch that place by the hall.
Can you bring us up to date on our Brady?
Brady? I'll see to it. I, I, Paul and I went to see him on Friday. Um, he had a big grin on his face. He was walking around in his sea house, sea house decorated walker, standing straight. He looks taller. You could tell by the look on his face, he's not feeling that pain. The pain I know that he had to feel, he stands straight, he's not listening. He would walk in, he's not really a good worker.
Public Works Director had his knee replaced on Monday of last week.
Yeah, and um, you talked to him today, right?
Yeah.
We, we're having to really be careful because we think he's gonna try and come back work. So guys, we have, we have something that we learned from D E Q today. Uh, they're gonna come and do an inspection of wastewater uh, treatment pipe and we said we're not, I'm Brady, uh, for another week. Because we don't want him freaking out. He can freak out within another week.
So is he supposed to stay out, what, six weeks?
He says he's gonna be out to June twenty-fifth, but I suspect, Carden, that will be what his doctor says.
Okay, so back to staff reports, I'm sorry. Um, any questions, comments?
I didn't put any general stuff in there because Paul and I didn't get a chance, he was on baseball. So if you would like, call it over, anything that, that these staff guys generally work on, he's willing to do that. What about the um, security cameras over the um, the court area, is working?
As far as I know, I haven't been down it. It really take a whole lot of time to see what's going on. That's something I will need to.
Roy says they're up and he just got the parts for, he got all of the um, pieces. So remember, there was one that was waiting, he got the pieces to do that. They just need to put the stand up. He says it's working really good. I went down and I went to the, the new office. I've been down there for a while and it's really nice. And it's a nice screen with all the cameras and you can see you go quite well on it. He made it seem like he couldn't, but uh, they're watching.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about the launch grounds and the cameras.
Oh, uh, the kiosk area, we have actually um, Oh, uh the kiosk area, we have actually um the boat launch ramp fees are up this year. So that either means we have a lot more boat people or a lot more people paying their fees after Casey scared him last year.
So is that camera working well?
Mm-hmm.
And you can see?
Mm-hmm. Well, on that day, there was nobody there because it was bad ocean, but but yeah.
Well, thank you for um keeping our city safe and water running and sewers clean. Um you've got a safety committee meeting tomorrow?
It's not a safety committee meeting. It's a safety, safety break for employees. It's an O S R sponsored event where all employees across the state of Oregon, not all, but anybody participates, takes a break and does, talks about safety, does safety stuff. We're doing a barbecue out here. I have some safety bingo and some games, so they're gonna be playing to win safety prizes, but they're it's not just a barbecue, it's gonna be safety break.
That's fabulous. Good idea. Um any, any other questions? How about um closing public comments? Anybody? Okay, uh Councilwoman?
Oh, pardon me. Um oh, Mira, are you still here? So I didn't realize that Mira was joining tonight. Did you guys know? Mira is the consultant that the group has helping them. She's from Aptim. Um and she's been work, she's been working with them. I I guess she's signed off, but um.
She's in Boston.
Yes, so I guess she probably has signed off. I apologize. I would have let her talk. Anyway, she says, hi, I'm Mira. I work for Aptim Consulting for the grant. And then she says, it's been great working with Mr. Ken and Mr. Whitmore and Miss Wagner. She started working. Okay, we missed the videos. I'm sorry, but nobody else is up here.
Okay, so um under council comments, I just wanted to um update the council that Kim and I and Carla did attend a two-day, very intense workshop down in Plymouth Falls for the League of Organized Cities Spring and it was fabulous. It was so inspiring. Um the main thing I came through is that um Patty, what's her last name, mobile? Anyway, Patty, the head cuckoo person at L L C gave us a really good insight into our charter and reviewing that. And that has never been done here in the city of Dico Bay. Uh from nineteen seventy-three, when we were incorporated, we have not done any revisions. And that needs to be really looked at and she suggests that we get um solicit citizen input into this and start reviewing this. Um L L C does have on their website a total charter sample for us that we can work with and and work on and updating just because there are laws that we should be in line with um state and federal guidelines that um we've never updated our charter. So I'm gonna be working on that pretty attentively. It was um really, really interesting. The League of Organized Cities lawyer was there and he gave us an update on the Supreme Court case that has um come before them from the city of Brent Pass versus the homeless people. And um so they updated us on, um yeah, updated us on what was going on with um that case. And that won't be resolved until June, but that's gonna be very, very insightful because that affects the whole entire nation as to um what they decide on that lawsuit. Our Karen Rockwell from Lincoln County Housing was there. She gave really a great report on housing in Lincoln City and how we are really going forward with not only housing the homeless, but so many plans for homescoming. And um it was, she was very inspirational and and just, it was just so cool to have our Lincoln City, Lincoln County. Um there was lots of housing issues that were discussed and um we had little breakout sessions. And so there was lots of um sharing with other cities that I was able to participate in and that that was wonderful as well. So I've got names and phone numbers to contact with that. So it was an intense two days, but it was worth every minute and um we've got lots of, lots of work to do here in the city, but we're gonna be I was at Sarah from the Oregon Department of Energy said you eat a little bit one bite at a time, so that's what I'm gonna do. Um so, Councilwoman, do you wanna start this evening with any councilor comments?
I would just like to say thank you and that I look forward to working with all of you and I'm excited
Yes, thank you.
to jump in and learn where you guys are at and and just start letting it one bite at a time.
Dig in. One bite at a time. That's what we're gonna do, Bill.
I was just wondering if there are any updates about the portable housing going in next week?
Uh the townhomes?
The ones?
The ones over here?
Yeah.
Yeah, which, over here on Highway one oh one, right?
Little west.
That's uh they're actually in the process of working through getting um plans commissioned. They're trying to get on the June agenda. They just turned in their geo tech report to K I last week. So they're moving along. They have some very specific deadlines they have to meet um in order for the grant. And I think they need to start construction in August, in August, I wanna say, so. Yeah, um they had a community event with a lot of folks. They had a town hall basically event with a lot of people from the Little Oak Folk Community to talk about um that. In fact, they took out that uh fire pit that I understand that they put in there. They had put a fire pit in their community area. I said, these places are looking really nice. And I was like, I might need to go over there. Put my ball over there. Anyway, they had a fire pit in it after feedback from the Little Oak Folk Community. They're like, nope. They took it out because they're putting a tap in there, something like that, or just a, they were, anyway, so. Yeah, anyway, so yeah, they're they're working on it. They got some good deadlines. They still look really nice. I sh- I share that with you, that's good. The drawings, yeah.
Um yeah, so I think the water plant had worked with um, can it put um Portland State University woman, Elise Brannick, and person from O S U. I'm not sure if you worked with both, in contact with Paul a while ago to look at their water treatment plant and microplastics that are in the affluent. And now the second part of their study is to provide uh um free microplastic filters um to ten percent of the resident population. And it's free. The people who get it are free and you can keep it at the end of the study. Would over a year period, collect the lint gathered on a filter and fill out a series of three short questionnaires. And then like I said, it's like a hundred fifty dollar filter payment. So we're trying to, I'm trying to help promote this. Um so if anybody's interested in this filter and in helping get the word out, um how many? They figured what, sixty to seventy people would be our permanent resident? So um I'm thinking we could start with just the people that come to our meetings or put it on our website, but um I'm interested in this. I mean, microplastics in the ocean are a huge deal. And um yeah, it's getting into fish, it's getting into the brains of kids, it's like the the metal plastics that break down into the microplastics. So I don't even know where my filter in my washing machine is. I do always clean out the uh the dryer. So there's an e- there's an email, yeah, there's a um, I'll give it to you. There's an email address at the bottom. You can contact her and say you wanna sign up. Or we could uh have um collect names at City Hall, but it's better, I think, so that city people don't have to do more work to um, you know, just contact her directly.
Oh, yeah, but um, yeah, you could put it on, I'm sorry, I don't know what.
You could plug it onto our website and you could maybe put it on our Facebook page, City's Facebook page.
Absolutely.
So anyway, it's an interesting study and we'll keep us, speed on um uh what the results are of the study, but it's only us in Camden Beach that they're looking at. Because we're small enough communities and in Camden Beach, they have a He Stack Rocking Awareness Program, which is sort of like, they're trying to do it out of rock, but it's a community group that's been along, around for a long time. So they can work through that community group. We don't really have one, a community group that could really put it on for a website and Facebook page, we could do that.
We'll get sent out to the H O A contacts that we have and they can get it out in the news.
That's great.
That, that, that'll help a lot. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll start.
I'm I'm gonna watch. I think it was a good meeting that brought them aboard, um Bill, and um we, it was like we're talking to you sometimes, so I said, yeah.
Do we have a meeting on that property, the Gregerson property?
Yeah, that I, now that I got the first real draft of the budget at that time.
I can hear you.
The Gregerson property, the property that's been discussed.
Are they the ones to sell over by the harbor?
The, what, the portable housing?
The two, eight, eight, eight acres, some acres?
We go to Gregerson property, the ones right there of the harbor and the, and the park.
It goes between the hotel and gown and then a whole other two acre section that goes up behind where Truss lives. Unanchored.
I didn't even answer.
Uh you might not have been at that meeting, but there there was a phone call from them to the mayor, I think?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and we we talked about they were gonna maybe find out more.
And as if we might be interested in trying to get something by the harbor protected by our city park or what was your conversation? This was that, this was that piece that we talked, it sounded right here, down by postcard station.
Yeah.
Up across behind there, all this area back here.
It's my acre.
It's not for sale right now, but he, apparently the city's tried to get it in the past before.
Yeah.
And he, the parents weren't willing to sell, but he reached out to the mayor and said, hey, you know, I'm thinking about my parents' future and hey, is the city interested in this? And this piece right over here, right now, right over, where is the darn harbor? Okay, right here, there is a spot in there that is in the harbor master plan of the N A loop through for bay and out, bay and out, you know, coast guard outfit. So which would provide also actually parking.
Just one, one lot part of it, so. Yeah, and I'm interested in those parts by, what were you talking about in that? Yeah, tremendous opportunity, but it it needs lots of backup. Needs urban renewal, it needs housing, it, yeah, huge discussion.
Yeah.
That's the property where we had to give them, or we had to give an easement in order to do the check down, right?
Yeah.
To do the dredging?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, but we'll kind of, more into that. Councilwoman, you say?
Great meeting, Mayor, and I'll say thank you to myself for signing up. I've seen you in action. I really appreciate you being here. Thank you.
I guess we're done. Let's go home.